Ms. Judy, are you ready? All right, it is seven o'clock and welcome to our regular council meeting in the town of Batesburg-Leezville at the beautiful Town Hall complex. Thank you, everyone, for being here this evening. At this time, I would like to invite Shanaz Page, the media director of Christchurch Church, to come up and lead us in the invitation. Mr. Shanaz, if you would.
My pleasure. Good evening, council members, town representatives, and town. Super grateful to have the opportunity to lead us in our invitation this evening. If you will, please remove your hats and bow your heads to our Father with peace. Gracious King and Father, we thank you so much for the opportunity for us to meet and convene this evening. Would you please, most of all, allow us to all be on one accord? Would you guide this meeting and allow us to all be together? Would you please bless our town, bless our community? We pray for those who are homeless or who are still in turmoil and tension. Would you please bless that? Would you bless our community and bless each of us going from here this evening? And for this town to be a better place. Thank you, we praise you, just in our prayer.
Thank you, Shanaz, appreciate that. Stand up, you are able, for the pledge of allegiance by Ms. Brown.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Approval of the agenda, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Brown, do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Faulkner.
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Mr. Hall?
On the agenda, on item number four, I don't know, nine, eight, F, eight, that's a contractual situation which should be discussed in executive session. Do not have a copy of a new contract. There is an existing contract, but I propose we remove that from the agenda and place it on the January agenda.
I have a motion in second, and this will be an amendment to the motion and to the second. So, Mr. Faulkner, therein. Otherwise.
Second, I vote affirmatively.
Sir?
Do you have the motion?
The second.
And affirmatively to vote, meaning on the motion and second, and amendment without the cut?
What was the motion, again?
The motion was to approve the agenda, but I have a... Can the amendment be introduced at this time?
You have to have a motion?
On the amendment. On the amendment.
Confirm the vote on the amendment?
Yes, sir.
And then you...
Okay, so I have the motion, I have the second for the amendment.
Second.
Mr. Kane? District one?
Yes.
District two? This is to... This is on the amendment to amend the agenda, to take it... To take off the town attorney's contract off of this and put it to January.
Oh.
Okay. District two?
No.
No.
District three?
District three votes yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five? District six?
No.
District seven?
No.
District eight?
Yes.
And mayor votes no.
That's fair.
Motion fails. I have to... We have to do a vote on the... We have the main motion now, so we have a motion and a second on the agenda. And so this is a motion and the second on the agenda as presented in the packet. District one?
No.
Why would you do this differently?
My discussion...
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you, Ms. Kane. Point of order, discussion on the... On the main motion for the agenda, any discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Kane?
Okay, so...
Mr. Kane, you have the floor.
Is it my understanding that everybody has read the contract for the attorney? And that's why we're gonna move forward with it on the agenda, is that right? Everybody up here has read it?
No.
Mr. Kane, you have the floor. It's not a question...
I'm asking, I'm posing a question to council.
You could ask, Mr. Kane.
They don't have to answer me, but I did pose the question to council. Ted, did you... Did you distribute the contract?
There is actually a stack of the current contract that's right up there.
Which was...
This is the current contract for the attorney, right there? So everyone will get a chance to look at that.
Okay, but...
It's an open document that's been voted on and approved by council. It's the last contract.
Okay, so...
The existing contract, sir.
All right.
Mr. Kane, you have the floor still.
Oh, thank you. So, the point is that we have two new council members. I haven't read that document. And when we... You have... You have a document or a contract in front of you that we cannot discuss in open council. Is that right?
No, this document is the current contract. It's a...
It's a public document?
This is a public document voted on by council.
Okay, but have we seen it prior to today?
We thought...
Start last year.
We did vote on this, yes, sir.
When?
Two years ago, sir.
Okay, so we have new council members, right?
Mr. Kane, make your statements.
Okay, so we have new council members that have not seen it. I have not seen it in at least a year. We don't know if what's in there is what was in there before. It just makes sense that we would go into an executive session, take a few minutes, take a look at it, and then vote. I mean, that is decent and in order.
Thank you. Any other discussion on the agenda? Okay, if a first and a second on the agenda is presented in your packet. District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
District three votes no.
District four?
No.
District six?
Yes.
District seven?
Yes.
District eight?
Yes.
And mayor votes yes. Motion passes. Adoption of the minutes for the regular council meeting for November thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. Do you have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
And Mr. Brown, do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Hall. Any discussion? District one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
District three votes yes.
Four?
Yes.
Six?
Yes.
Seven?
Yes.
Eight?
Yes.
And mayor votes yes. Motion passes. For the mayor's report, our next regular council meeting will be January the eighth. That is Elvis Christmas birthday, so... Wherever you believe it should be. Council committee report. Central Midlands Councilmember Hall.
Central Midlands Cog did not meet in November. The next meeting is this Thursday at the Harbison Boulevard.
Thank you. E-PAC, Councilmember Brown?
E-PAC did not meet this month, so I have nothing to report at this time.
Thank you, sir. And the common advisory committee, Mr. Councilmember Kane?
Stand up, report.
And for the joint municipal water and sewer commission, there's a lot of stuff that is... Continues to happen at the commission. For capital improvement projects on the water side, they're finalizing the last few... The last remaining easement. There's literally one last easement acquisition for the water project coming through Batesburg-Leezville. There's a planning grant for the town of Swansea that's begun, finalizing the waterline replacement project in the pavilion. And water plant expansion continues at the West Columbia Plant with an additional capacity of thirteen point... Thirteen point five million gallons. And six of that would be joint municipals. This is gonna include ozone upgrades and TNO... For TNO, for taste and odor. And GHC type of technology for the PFOS, for the plastics type stuff that they're finding across the country that is from the 3M Corporation. There are ten, twelve different current water projects in the CIP. That doesn't really include a lot of developer-driven projects that are these big housing additions that we're seeing. On sewer side, several projects in Red Bank area, approximately ten current projects in the sewer capital improvement plant, which does not include a lot of those housing developments that we see out there. On the technology side, staff is working with a new CIS and CNMS system. The project portal continues to expand with... Which, the project portal basically tracks their projects that they have going on. It's a nice, nice piece of software. And AMI is also being studied further for this fiscal year. They've got a new engineer, a new GIS analyst, and a new utility technician onboard. And the financial position is... And the growth remains very strong at Joint Municipal. And that is my report. At this time, Mr. Mike Taylor, BL Chamber of Commerce President. Mr. Mike, if you would give us an update. Welcome, sir. Thank you for being here.
Thank you very much. At our last meeting, town council meeting, it was right before our annual banquet. It was held that Thursday. I thought it was very successful. Ron Hawrey was our guest speaker. He did a great job again this year. Part of the awards, Tanya Rogers of the Twin City News received the chairman's award. Michael Neese received the president's award. And Tidwell Jewels was the spoiled business of the year award. I want to thank y'all for setting the ambiance and the atmosphere and so forth for last weekend, because if you run around the town and saw the beautiful lights and everything, it set the mood, I thought, for next weekend. And with the threat of rain heavy on Friday, Saturday, and worrying about whether they had a parade and all that kind of stuff, everything worked out, I thought, great. If you walked down Friday night, I want to compliment Leesville Murs Association. I get calls every year from around, like Aiken and so forth, about when Christmas in Leesville is gonna take place. That was a beautiful evening. It was handled great. It deceived a lot of Christmas lights, the other lights in town, people walking all over the place with smiles. It was a great event. Then the Sunday with Christmas parade, the people that with the threat of rain still worked hard and got floats ready and so forth. Most appreciative of the police department and everybody else that worked hard to bring that on. We appreciate that. And then the town, it was a super job in the park. There's a large crowd walking around. What pleased me is we had some floats from Aiken, from Ermo, and so... And they walked from the side and went to the town park and enjoyed what they stayed. So it was a great event for the community, and we most appreciate it. The winners of, of course, the grand marshal I prayed was the coach, the Batesburg-Leezville Coasts pitch All-Star team, which came in second in the World Series. And what was so special to me about that, when you look at us aside and everything, is these kids were also, as you well aware, got the sportsmanship award. So that represents great representation for our community. First place, that was Arts on the Ridge. Second place was Batesburg-Leezville Branch Library. And third place was Deniz Chennels, which is, I think, Ermo and that area. This past Saturday, we had ribbon cutting at Bugle Roasting Company. That was a unique experience. I learned enough dangers of roasting coffee. And they cleared their plans for that side of town. And to meet the type of people, I'm very encouraged and look forward to that. Last night, Arts on the Ridge hosted the tech halls with arts at Davis Pond Facility. It was a joyful evening. We had heavy orange and beverages, and Christmas music was provided by the Carolina Trio. And then the Bruce Rogers, nice kick off there. So last weekend and this weekend were super. Just want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. Like, like y'all.
Thank you, Mr. Mike. Appreciate that. Ms. Judy, do we have any public comments this evening? There's no unfinished business. We're moving into new business. Item A is approval of the regular council meeting dates for 2024. So this is required by state law. We have to approve these regular monthly council meeting dates. They're always held on the second Monday of each month. And so we have those dates. I think they're printed right here for us at our seat, on our packet. We have a motion to approve the calendar dates for the meeting.
So moved.
Mr. Hall, do you have a second?
Second.
Mr. Faulkner, any discussion? 这里有 one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
District three votes yes.
Four?
Yes.
Six?
Yes.
Seven?
Yes.
Eight?
Yes.
And mayor votes yes. Motion passes. Item B is a first reading for Orange rezoning property located at 114 East Columbia Avenue, consisting of point one-nine acres from C1, general commercial, to C2, office and institutional commercial. This is TMS number 007100-07-013. Do you have a motion for the first read? Saying no motion, I will continue. Item C, new business, council discussion regarding proposed Woodard Unity Park. I know this was something that Ms. Mitchell had foot on, asked for us to put on, and council approved. And I would ask at this time that Mr. Luckadoo would give us an update on what's happening with the park. And then I would ask each council member, you know, just request a floor and ask all the questions you want. But I ask we do it in the, you know, in the lines of the business, so please ask for the floor. I'll give you the floor, and then we can address Mr. Luckadoo. Thank you.
Okay, just to provide an update on where things stand with Woodard Unity Park. As most everybody knows, but for the new members, we have previously purchased all the property that's needed for this project, which included the old Sears Roebuck building with the fenced-in property, as well as two other parcels, kind of ranging from the old Sears Roebuck building to Fulmer Street, that entire parcel of property. Our engineering architects are currently engineering and designing the park. There is one component of their scope of work that was not originally included in the engineering cost estimates, and that was for the pavilion building. So previously, when council approved the funding and everything related to engineering and design, that did not include the pavilion itself. That concept kind of came in later. The building, as it's been seen in the renderings, it's estimated at about one and a half million, with the engineering cost at about a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. I did talk with the architects to have them provide us with another option for a pavilion building, which consists of bathroom. Primarily, it's the bathroom facility, but it also has a covered area that could serve for bands to play in that area and things. I've asked them to try and scale that pavilion building down to bring that cost estimate down, as well as the engineering costs, since that's something we would have to pay to continue the engineering and design for that. I'm waiting to get that back. Unfortunately, the engineer brother unexpectedly passed away in a vehicle accident, and that's delayed him in getting that back to us. But once I have that, I will get that to council. But as far as the rest of the park itself, engineering and design and construction documents are underway for the rest of what you've seen in the photos. As far as funding, we are trying to begin our approach to seek avenues for funding at a federal level, state level. We're trying to look at any and all grant opportunities that may be there to see what opportunities are there to try and pull together the funding for this project. And that's kind of where we're at at this point. Happy to take any questions with regards to this if you have them at this time.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Mr. Hall?
What's the total project cost projected, total cost? This is a pavilion.
With the current pavilion that's in there?
No, yeah, with this, one point five, plus the engineering is another one forty-five. So you're talking one point six four five for the pavilion building. Now, the rest of the park, the price tag for it?
The rest, about three point two million was the total with the one point five million.
Has anyone surveyed the... And this is for a memorial to Sergeant Witter, and has, of course, civil rights implications. But has anyone surveyed the minority community? Maybe they're willing to accept something like renaming Lexington Avenue for Sergeant Witter and a smaller park area? And maybe divert funds to sidewalks and other things that would help their next generation in safety in their neighborhoods, particularly places like Lion Street, Sun Hill, Petrelle, areas like that. Have we done that? Have we gotten the minority community, is this what you really want?
Mr. Hall has the floor. Please wait. Mr. Hall, you finished?
Yes.
Mr. Kane?
If I may answer that question real quick. What's been done to date is we did have a... An initial stakeholder committee meeting. And Jake can actually provide all the names of everybody faster than I can that served in that stakeholder meeting. Jake, do you want to mention that real quick? That took place early in the concept of this.
Jesse Barr, Vietnam veteran, Purple Heart winner. His cousin, whose name slips my mind, who's also Vietnam Purple Heart recipient, not winner. And then Colonel Mark Brown, who's from here, is retired from the Army and still in intelligence in Northern Virginia. Cynthia Etheridge was part of that as well. Those were four, and then we had...
Don North.
Don North out of... Who had been instrumental in the historical marker. But that was the main members of that stakeholder meeting, trying to focus on African-American veterans.
If I may, how were they selected? Are they representative of the community?
They're all from the community and been a part of the community.
From Virginia. Well, Mark is from here. He's graduated from Batesburg-Leezville. His family is still here. He's served in the military and is in intelligence. So he's... He is proud of Batesburg-Leezville and was very excited to be a part of that process. I thought we had a pretty good focus group that, you know, touched on, you know, local members and tried to focus on what... Yeah, because I'll be honest, my first thought was, you know, a quiet place of reflection. And the stakeholders were the ones that said, no, we need some kind of a water feature, something that brings people to the park on a hot summer day for their kids. They were the ones that came with some of those different ideas. The pavilion was really an idea that came out of that conversation. You know? You know, we've talked about the Civil Rights Trail as a part of that. They were definitely bought into that, but they really wanted it to be more of a gathering place for the community to come together. They will learn and absorb the knowledge and understand the history by being there. But they really... Again, the water feature was something that they really, you know, hearted on and really wanted to have something for the kids to play in. And then having that venue to have some kind of...
Were you saying the pavilion will actually be an exhibition hall for history or...
So, as it's shown in this right now, you would... There would be a men's bathroom on one side and a women's on the other. You wouldn't enter the bathrooms directly from the outside. You would enter into a lobby-type area that would have the ability to put pictures or to tell the story along the walls inside of that area.
Approximate size?
I don't have the dimensions off the top of my head, footprint. I know it's pretty wide. It's almost the width of the... Being from Lexington Avenue to what would be the sidewalk and landscaper divide along Highway twenty-three.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Any other question? Mr. Kane, did you have a question?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? Ms... Yeah, Ms. Hartley?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to comment to add to what was said by Jake, that this is to be a memorial and that, I believe, the residents of the town, because of the type of incident that it was that generated this, that we would not necessarily look for just a naming of a street for that pavilion. That would be more of a recognition than naming of a street. That's my comment.
Thank you, Ms. Hartley. Any other discussion? Mr. Luckadoo, thank you for that report. Jake, thank you.
Yes, sir.
As well. Appreciate that. Moving to item D. Wait there. Yes. Get back on my agenda. So, item D is the council appointments to the planning commission and board of zoning appeals. So there are several open seats by... In certain districts, and the council members have brought their name to Ted, and it's been put in our packet. And what I'll do is I'll read these. And if council wishes, they can make a motion to accept as a badge, if you would, if that is possible, if there are no objections. So I will read these in, and I'll entertain a motion after that. District one for the planning commission, Rachel Taylor. District two for the planning commission, Sean Bryant. District four for the planning commission, Argenar... Lojar, thank you. I'm from Missouri. Williams. District six, Riley Adams, the planning commission. District seven for the planning commission, David Shaw. For Board of Appeals, District two, Bert Chantley. Also for the Board of Appeals, District four, Lily Gibbs. And those represented in our packet. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Mr. Faulkner, second by Mr. Hall. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Mr. Hall?
I cannot find in our ordinances anywhere that the appointments have to be district-specific. The ordinance says that to be a member, you must be a resident within the town limits. I have been maybe misunderstood that the appointee had to reside within the district for which they represented.
Yeah, my understanding, and attorney can correct me, but my understanding is they have to be within the town and the district. Each council can appoint or present any... Anyone within the town limits. They don't have to reside inside the district.
I have not looked at ordinance, but my memory of which was is that if they come from the town, I think the council has the courage of each other, let one come to each district. I think that's just been the commonality over the years.
By tradition.
Okay? Any discussion? Any other discussion? District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
District three votes yes.
District four?
Yes.
District six?
Yes.
District seven?
Yes.
District eight?
Yes.
And mayor votes yes. Motion passes. Item D, is council election of the mayor pro temp. Following election, state law requires that the council elect from its members a mayor pro temp for a term not to exceed two years.
Yeah, I move that we... I move that we table this, because, again, council has not met. She's going to discuss who would want to be mayor pro temp. And I don't see how we can, at this meeting, just decide who's gonna be mayor pro temp without the entire council at least having some type of workshop or a discussion about it.
I have a motion by Mr. Kane to table. Do I have a second?
Mr. Mayor, I...
Do I have a...
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I have a motion by Mr. Kane to table. Do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Hartley? Do I have a... In discussion on a table? I think there's discussion on the table. So this would be a motion by Mr. Kane and a second by Ms. Hartley to table the election of mayor pro temp. District one?
No.
District two?
No.
District three?
District three votes yes.
District four?
Yes.
District six?
No.
District seven?
No.
District eight?
No.
And mayor votes no? Motion fails. Do I have another motion for council election of mayor pro temp? Ms. Brown?
Would like to appoint Jason Crowes.
A motion for Jason Crowes? Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Wise? Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I stand...
Mr. Kane?
I stand corrected. We did... Somebody did have a meeting.
Any other discussion?
I have a question.
Ms. Hartley?
When was the meeting? Why was I not included? And how was the decision come to by the elders?
There's been no meeting there.
Well, how can we make this decision tonight? And everyone is not aware of what is being done. Are we not a council that works collectively for the town of Batesburg-Leezville? So would not all eight of us be notified and not individually? My question here, my question is, would we not be notified? And if we were to be notified, why were we not all notified? And when was... If there has been, how do we come to this? How do we come to this consensus right now if everyone is not aware of it?
May I have a motion? Do I have a second?
That was my question.
Okay, thank you. I have a motion, second. Any other discussion? District one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
District three votes no.
District four?
No.
District six?
Yes.
District seven?
Yes.
And district eight?
District eight votes no, and not, out of disrespect to seat seven, but I also question the validity of whether or not we are a council or-
Mr. Kane?
Our rule says that a-
Mr. Hall, we're in a vote, sorry.
A council member may explain the reason for his ballot.
Thank you. Then I'll-
In a free society, if I may add.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hall. And mayor votes yes. Motion passes.
No disrespect.
All right, moving on with council appointments. For, uh, Adam A is town attorney. I have a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we, um, table this, again, because nobody, the, the council as a whole has not discussed anything that's on this agenda. And nobody's seen the, uh, the contract, nobody's discussed the contract. We didn't, we have an executive session scheduled for tonight, and we discussed everything, and that could have easily been on, um, on the agenda through a, a, uh, executive session, then we come unvoted, you know? And, and like you said, no disrespect to Crest, but nobody, and we have not as a group sat down to discuss these things. Thank you.
I have a motion by Mr. Kane to table. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Miss Hartley, to table. Any discussion on the table? Uh, this is a, a motion, second to table, to district one?
No.
District two?
No.
District three?
District three votes yes.
District four?
Yes.
District six?
No.
District seven?
No.
District eight?
Yes.
And mayor votes no. Motion fails. Do I have another motion for town attorney?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Prowse?
I move that we approve, um, reestablish the contract for an additional two years based on the existing structure of the contract, which has been in place for, uh, several years, I believe.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Prowse. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Bucknight? Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, if I may. I have serious issues with the-
Mr. Hall?
I have serious issues with the existing contract. No disrespect to the attorney. However, there are wording, there is verbiage in the contract in which council is not recognized as the authority in the town. The and/or stipulation says that the attorney can report to the town manager or to the mayor and council, but does not necessarily have to report to council. And I thought that it was employee of the council.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Any, any other discussion?
Yes.
Miss Hartley?
The, I need to be clear on the terms of the contract, what's the, just number of years? I, I have not seen anything, I don't know, I'm new to this, so I need to be apprised of, and since we have not had no work session, I don't know what is before me other than what's on the paper. So my question is, what's the term?
Interesting. That's what I'm trying to say.
Hold on one second.
I want you all to report that you're doing it like for two years.
Yep, all right.
There is an existing contract that-
Mr. Hall, Miss Hartley has a floor. Mr. Hall, just hold one second. Miss Hartley, are you finished?
So now are we at the time to renew the contract?
Yes, ma'am.
And we will renew the contract-
It will be for two years, ma'am.
All right, and we have not had a discussion as a council, as a collective body?
This is our discussion right now for this and the, and the active public document that's in front of us.
Okay, I have not read the document, I've never seen the document. So therefore, as a representative for district four, I don't know what the terms are, and neither would I know what the entire council would agree upon. To, uh, for us to sit here tonight and vote individually, yea or nay, I have no knowledge of whether there has been prior conversation or discussion. And to say that this is discussion now, we don't have the opportunity to get clarity on what's actually in the contract. That's my discussion.
Okay, thank you, Miss Hartley. And Mr. Hall?
Yes, there is in the existing contract a provision that that contract may be extended for one year upon mutual consent of both parties. That is an option. So are we voting for a brand-new contract? If so, I would strongly recommend that council seize said contract before we vote on it.
Mr. Prowse, if you would repeat your motion, please?
My mo-, my motion is to extend the current contract by two years.
Okay, so that's the motion that's on the floor. Mr. Hall?
Okay, I have, I have strong objections to the verbiage.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? Mr., Miss Hartley?
Mr. Mayor, tonight, when we follow through, as we're going just now, we will take the vote and the, this will be final.
It will be the contract would extend for two years. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for answering that question.
Yes, ma'am. Any other discussion?
Uh, are there any terms-
Mr. Hall?
Are there any terms to terminate that contract during the, uh, during the two-year period? There are no provisions for termination? And this contract, as I understand it, is not with-
The contract can be, a contract can be terminated by, uh, either party-
On what terms?
In this case.
On what terms? A buyout? The other issue, of course, is this is not a contract with Mr. Spradlin. This is a contract with Mr. Spradlin's law firm. So therefore, they may substitute any attorney at any time.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Miss Hartley?
So, as Mr. Buck said, this is a contract with his law firm, not him per se. All right, so it's apparent, or it's obvious, that I'm not the only council member that remember who is not fully apprised of what's happening here tonight. We need more time with this. This, to me, is not the time to make this decision.
Thank you, Miss Hartley. Any other discussion? Uh, district one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Mr. Mayor, I abstain because I don't have enough information about, um, the contract.
An abstention is a no?
An abstention is an extension, uh, Judy.
District four?
I abstain because I don't not, do not have enough information regarding the subject on the book, on the table.
District six?
Yes, because I have a contract in front of me.
District seven?
Yes. Was there any verbiage?
That, please, please. District eight?
Did you read it?
District eight votes no, strong objection to the verbiage.
And mayor votes yes. Motion passes. Central Midlands Council of Government, do I have any motions for the appointment for the Council of Government?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Wise?
I'd like to make a motion to select Councilman Bucknight.
A motion for Councilman Bucknight for the Cobb, for the Council of Governments Committee. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Miss Brown. Any discussion? District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
District three?
Mr. Mayor, I abstain-
Okay.
Because we have not discussed any of these positions or anything that's on this agenda tonight, and it is probably, I mean, I'm sure y'all met, somebody met, because-
I think we understand your objection.
I'm not finished with my objection, though.
Okay. Okay.
Stop talking over me about-
Let me know, vote, please.
Okay, well, if you're talking over me, Mr. Mayor, please.
I'm trying to move the vote, sir.
Okay, but I still, you can't move the vote over top of me.
I'm not, sir. District four?
So I abstain.
District four?
Yep, no, I'm not done yet. I'm trying to really-
I'm just-
I'm trying to hold it together because you keep- Judy, I am abstaining from this vote because I feel as though the entire council has not had an opportunity to discuss these positions and exactly what they do, and who has been on these committees, uh, over the years, and if there's going to be any type of, uh, of, um, transition from one member to another. We don't have enough information, that's why I abstain. I'm not voting no, I said I abstain.
A non-vote is a no vote. An extension is an extension.
District four?
I abstain because of a lack of knowledge of, of placement.
District six?
I vote yes because it was in our package of definitions of all these positions.
Can you discuss your package?
Mr. Kane, Mr. Kane, Mr. Kane, you don't want to hear it from Mr. Kane.
Can we just say that number one is enough?
District seven?
Okay, so is it in there, is it done? If it's in there, that means it's done? You don't get to discuss it? Is that what you're saying?
District seven?
Yes.
District eight?
Okay, abstain.
And mayor votes yes. Motion passes. Environmental, uh, Planning Advisory Committee, do I have, um, any motions?
I move to appoint Miss Hartley.
And a motion for Miss Hartley, do I have a second? Mr. Prowse? Any discussion?
Yes.
Miss Hartley?
I decline for the fact that I'm not aware of what is to be expected of me, I have no knowledge of it. And yes, the paper has something written on it, but I have never had any discussion with anyone about this, so I decline the nomination. Thank you.
Thank you. I have to withdraw, do I need to withdraw the, the motion a second, technically?
I withdraw the motion.
Okay, thank you. Are there any, any other motion for Environmental Planning Advisory Committee?
Come on, Mr. Prepland, somebody speak up.
She helped it. Good luck. Mr. Mayor?
Uh, Miss Brown?
Jason?
Uh, Mr. Prowse? Um, a motion for Mr. Prowse, who currently serves on EPAC. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
A second by Mr. Hall. Any discussion? District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Mr. Mayor, I abstain from, uh, the vote because council has not had an opportunity to, uh, to vet these positions. We have not, uh, met to discuss anything that's on this agenda, and I think it's, uh, it would be wrong for, uh, unless some other people have gotten together and feel comfortable voting, we as a council has not, have not gotten together to vote. So Judy, I, I'd like this to be rejected as an extension.
District four?
District four, I abstain because I am not aware of any discussion or meeting prior to tonight to come up with a name to present for this position. Thank you.
District six?
Yes.
District seven?
Yes.
District eight?
Yes.
And mayor votes yes. Uh, motion passes. Uh, and the next item is Joint Municipal Water and Sewer Commission, um, Mr. Prowse?
I move that we reappoint you to that position.
Yes, sir. I have a motion to reappoint, reappoint the mayor, uh, to Joint Municipal Water and Sewer Commission. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bucknight. Any discussion? District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to abstain from this vote because it, it's strange credulity to have, to think that these are all, um, spontaneous and non-scripted, uh, appointments, and council as a whole has not discussed anything on this agenda, uh, or these appointments. So Judy, I'd like to be, Mark is abstaining from the vote. Thank you.
District four?
I abstain from the vote.
District six?
Yes.
District seven?
Yes.
District eight?
Yes.
Yes.
And mayor votes yes. Motion passes. The comment, um, so this would be council appointment for the comment. Do I have any motions?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Prowse?
I move that we reappoint Mr. Kane to his current position.
I have a motion to reappoint Mr. Kane to his current position with the comment. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second by Mr. Wise. Any discussion?
Yeah. Okay.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Mr. Mayor, I abstain from voting because we have not discussed this. I appreciate it, Mr. Barker. Um, and we haven't discussed anything on this, uh, particular, uh, agenda for, uh, for this meeting, so I'm, I'm going to abstain from voting on this.
Judy, please.
District four?
I abstain for lack of knowledge.
District six?
Yes.
District seven?
Yes.
District eight?
Yes.
And mayor votes yes. Motion passes. And that moves us to the manager's report. Mr. Luckadoo?
I wouldn't be surprised. Okay. All right, um, I'd like to, before we begin, I'd like to express the town's condolences for the loss of Ms. Kathy Mingo this past Friday evening. Former councilwoman of district six, uh, she passed away on Friday afternoon, and I would just ask that everybody keep that family and adults abreast.
Jay, are you sending files, folks?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Um, to begin tonight, uh, just wanted to start out by remin, reminding everyone of our upcoming holiday closures. Uh, town offices will be closed on Monday, December 25th, or Wednesday, December 27th, for the Christmas holidays. And we will be closed as well on Monday, January 1st, for the New Year's holiday. Uh, next month, December 18th, we will be closed from 12 until 2:00 PM for our annual town employee Christmas luncheon and end-of-the-year awards. The LMA Christmas and Lees, well, I might touch on this, I'm not going to go into any detail, the, uh, Leeswell Merchants Association Christmas and Leeswell event was a success. The parade and the event after the, excuse me, after the parade and the park were greatly attended, um, probably our highest attendance yet in the, in the event following the parade.
How many did we have?
Forty-one.
Sir?
And attendants are close.
And attendance are close.
You're talking about, you're talking about in the park afterwards, that's ballpark, 500?
We were estimating 500.
500 or so people.
It's fantastic.
Which are the largest ones we've had yet. The Christmas movie night in Depot Park will be this upcoming Saturday, beginning at 6:00 p.m. We will be showing the animated movie, The Grinch, for those that come out at 10.
Uh, we got the popcorn, hot chocolate, and, yeah.
Do we get a couple of pizzas for the kids?
Well, I'll donate. I think we can.
Mr. Kane says donate a pizza.
We probably made a-.
Ten pizza.
What are you trying to say?
We're coming. We're all going to eat it if we're paying. Ten pizza, ten pizza.
Get pizza, pizza. It's certainly on.
Pizza, pizza.
All right, Jay, we'll donate, I will donate 10 pizzas. Okay, since last month's update, we still have not received final word from Rural Infrastructure Authority regarding our request to use an additional $2.9 million towards our line connection to our Lake Murray system. Once they get final word, SRF will be able to send us a resolution that they require to be passed regarding funding. Although we are not likely to have financial obligation towards our connection with Joint Municipal Water and Sewer, we are still required to pass the resolution nonetheless. Also, once we have final word from RIA, this will put us in a position to move forward with bidding the line for the lake system two and seeing what the financial obligation for that we have, which is projected to be about $1.6 million if RIA accepts what we have put before them.
Ted, Miss Kane has a question.
What did you say about the resolution? So, there's a, there's a funding resolution that the State Revolving Fund requires you to do regarding the funding of any project. But until we've heard from RIA and SRF on all the final details, we won't have that resolution. The contractor for the sea fund sidewalk project continues to make progress. If you've ridden up and down Highway 23 in the past few days, or seen the sidewalk behind Quick Carry, or if you've been down Saluda Highway at Rudy Street, you've noticed that he's been hard at work getting those sections of sidewalk repaired and replaced. We will be, and I emailed Jay today, let's reach out to the county. We should be putting in our 2024 sea fund request for funding application to them to see if we can be awarded sea funds for 2024. If you know of any sections of sidewalks that are damaged or broken and need, are in need of replacement, please submit those to us. You can, you can be as much eyes to us as we, we can go out and look. So, if you know of any damaged section, section of sidewalk, please let us know where those are at. Because when we submit our application for funding, we do have to list those roads that we intend to do work on.
And that's a big thank you to Lexington County where the sea funds come from.
Um, Mr. Luckadoo, I have a question. Is it possible or probable that there would be funds included in that package that would allow for cleaning of the sidewalks? There's some ladies who jog in Leesville, down, what is it, Main Street, from Tidwell down to the park and back. And about, I think it was in September, October, the sidewalk was slick, the ladies slipped.
Like, following rain?
No, it didn't, it wasn't raining. It was early morning. It was like 6:00, 6:30. And what, I talked with some people about what could be the possible problem, the possible problem. And because of the atmosphere and the different season changes, there's a buildup on the sidewalk. Could, I know this might sound simple, but, or silly to some people. But since we do have people who jog and walk, they can't run on that in the mornings early because it was slick. The men and the women were out on sidewalks. So, can we look at what could be done, if anything, to treat or clean that in some areas? I know it's, you're talking about a lot of territory here, but especially from that street, I can't remember, but right behind the Moms and Pops, from that block all the way down to the park. And on the right side and on the left, it gets a little slick. And the ladies and the men have a problem trying to run early.
So, I can actually address that. I understand what you're saying. Over time, you will get buildoo or stuff from trees that catches up.
Yes.
If you get buildoo, that can become slippery. I will say that this year, we added an additional person to the street department. It really helped during grass picking season. We've got one primarily assigned to Batesburg area and one primarily assigned to the Leesville area. As a matter of fact, to follow up with what you're asking, actually spoke with David Page, our street department supervisor, earlier this past week and said, hey, for, since they're not cutting as much grass in the winter, we have a mobile pressure washing trailer that actually heats the water as well, which helps the build, get the, cut through the ground a lot better. I have told him that during the wintertime, while grass is not growing and they've got more time to do special projects, sidewalk maintenance and pressure washing of sidewalks would be one of the things that I would like to see him do. So, that will be happening. Main Street was one of the areas discussed, as well as College Street, our downtown districts. So, that is something that should be coming, but I will certainly bring that up to him, should that concern him.
And as other people are coming into the town, you have more people who will use that area to jog or to walk in early mornings. So, that sounds good. I thank you.
And I think part of it is we've been replacing both broken sections. You'll have really grumpy sections of sidewalk with a very nice bright white sidewalk. Pressure washing could help to blend that.
And Ted, I would assume that it would be helpful as people come across sections of sidewalk like this, that they call Town Hall, and we can expedite that. Okay, thank you. Mr. Kane?
Teddy, can you make sure that David does the sidewalks in front of olive branch? The nice new sidewalks, but they haven't had any attention.
And, and, and we will certainly, will put any that are specifically mentioned on the list, but pressure washing sidewalks can be very time consuming. It can take a while. But I think if we just consistently work throughout the winter to try and get as much done as we can, but it is not an absolute quick process to do it. But if we can just methodically chip away at pressure washing sidewalks.
How hard is it to, to use the machine? How hard is it to use the machine?
The pressure washing trailer?
Yeah.
Oh, it's not extremely difficult.
I was saying, we might even get some community kids to help. I mean, tell me what we do with the pickup, the trash pickup or whatever?
Well, but there's only one pressure washer and can be in one spot at a time.
They need to sweep up the leaves, and so they do want to pressure wash the leaves. You want to make sure you get the leaves up and, you know, any debris. Then, then get, I mean, it's a nice little project for, for some kids. You know, maybe some kids just trying to get a merit badge or something.
Well, at least it sounds like a plan, isn't it?
Ms. Hartley?
All right, moving into the financial update. The total of all non-utility funds in the account to end the month of November General fund checking ended the month at $294,942. And the general fund local government investment pool account ended the month at $1,128,264, which was up about $5,000 in interest for the general fund last month. The total of all utility funds ended the month at $3,797,46, with $279,403 in the utility fund checking and the utility fund local government investment pool account at $2,968,850. The American Rescue Plan funds, you will see it's down to $172,516. That was the $315,500 transfer over to the general fund, which will be used for the second portion of the fire truck payment when that is ready to be made.
Has the first payment been made?
First payment was made. Yes, sir. You will notice a significant drop in the 2021 infrastructure revenue fund. That was due to a, a, a large payout that came in regarding the liquid chemical feed project of about, I'm trying to do the math real quick off the top of my head, $200 and some thousand dollars. We are seeking reimbursement from Lexington County as that was a grant approved project through CBPG. So, we will be getting that reimbursement back. And once we get it, it will go back into the 2021 infrastructure revenue fund account. Hospitality tax checking ended the month at $176,927, with the hospitality tax local government investment pool account at $1,44,205, bringing the total of H-tax funds to $1,221,132, bringing the total of all funds in the bank at $6,574,073. On the next page, as I do each month, and just to let the new members know, this is a month ending, going from 2014 to this current year, just showing what those accounts have done since 2014. And on the last page, for the general fund, operating revenues ended the month at 32% at $1,795,229 in revenue, with operating expenses at 38%, $2,176,030. Utility fund ended the month at, operating revenues ended at 24% at $2,175,406, with operating expenses at 16%, $1,457,245. One thing I will note about those percentages being lower is really what's caused that is that $5 million that we allotted for revenue and expenses related to the water project that was built into the budget. That's just making those percentages look lower at this point, since we've not gotten into revenues and expenses with regards to that.
Okay, I'm just giving it an accent. Okay, thank you.
The Biglons Assistance Fund operating revenues is at $2,116.20, at 22%. One thing that I will note, a deposit was done for the month, but it was done at the beginning of December, so it did not reflect in November. But that should be higher, and there should be two deposits in the month of December to balance that percentage of, in that revenue. Operating expenses ended the month at 40%, $3,790.78. And the H-tax fund operating revenues ended the month at 48%, $343,498, with operating expenses at 26%, $182,383.
Thank you, Mr. Luckadoo. Mr. Kane?
We, we talked a little bit earlier, and I think I was jawboning with Jay about this too. But there was an incident last week at Reed's, KJ's, where they had, they called for an ambulance and we kind of got to the bottom of it. Thank you, chief. But at some point, we spend a lot of money on a lot of things in this town. And we really need to look at buying the EMS rig and working, working it out. So, between the police department and the fire department, that we have some first responders. And, you know, a rig might cost 200, 250,000, right? But is it worth one life? The ambulance service that we have is inadequate. You got one, you got one ambulance that sits here, when it's gone, the other one is supposed to be here within like 45 minutes or something like that. And for the both of them on a call together, then you have nobody covering the citizens of Batesburg and Leesville. So, we have a new bucket truck. We got all types of toys and gadgets around town. We need to really think about the lives of our citizens and think about how we can get another rig here and start to do some of our own EMS records, first, these first responder records.
Thank you, Mr. Luckadoo. Appreciate that.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Uh, Mr. Hall?
I'm dazzled by all the big numbers now. Let's talk about small numbers. In the police budget, we're out of money for uniforms. In fact, we've exceeded the budget. So, how do you adjust, plan to adjust that budget to cover additional uniforms? Also, police overtime is on track for running out of money in March or April? Is there, can we discuss those budgets at some time, at one time? I'm concerned.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. That's something we can discuss. I know the, I can speak more specifically, I'll second to the overtime for PD. I think we have gotten almost all the positions filled. We have maybe three positions at this point. When we have gotten on the lower end of number of officers, we were having to pay guys a lot more overtime to, so, yes, early in this year. But at this point, we have filled a lot of positions. Some of those guys are in the academy and will be wrapping the academy up and getting on the road. We should see a steep decline in how much overtime is being spent out.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Thank you, Mr. Luckadoo, for your update. Item 11, Executive Session. We have two items for this evening. Discussion and legal advice regarding contractual matters related to residential development regulations involving Lexington County. And we also have discussion and legal advice regarding contractual matters between the town of Batesburg-Leesville and the town of Ridge Spring relating to water. Do I have a motion to enter into executive session?
And a question.
Do I have a mo?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Hall.
Second.
And second by Mr. Prowse. Any discussion about going into executive session?
Yeah, now, are these contracts that we, that we are about to look at? What are the contracts we're about to discuss? Why are we discussing them?
They're discussion and legal advice on the contract.
Can I answer my, can I ask one question?
This is a, the motion is to go into executive session, and I have a second to go into executive session. Any other discussion to go into executive session? District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
No.
District four?
Abstain.
District six?
Yes.
District seven?
Yes.
District eight?
Yes.
Anybody votes yes, we are in executive session. Okay, this time I'd like to entertain a motion for returning to regular session.
So moved.
Mr. Bocknight, do I have a second? Second. Ms. Hartley, any discussion? District one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
District three votes yes.
Four?
Yes.
Six?
Yes.
Seven?
Yes.
Eight?
Yes.
Anybody votes yes, we are back in regular session. Item 12, Possible Actions by Council, and to follow up to executive sessions, I think we have none this evening. And we'll move to item 13, which is potential agenda items for next month's meeting. Do I have any motions?
Mr. Kane?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Kane?
I think we should-
Mr. Hall?
Address the issue of possible redistricting.
Okay, a motion by Mr. Hall to put on the agenda for next month's meeting, redistricting. Do I have a second?
A second, Dan.
Mr. Kane, second? Any discussion?
Mr. Hall, can you be specific about what you want to talk about with regard to redistricting?
Well, we have an unbalanced, voter-wise, we have an unbalanced. I have no idea what the numbers from the South Carolina Department of Revenue indicate when we are currently. Do we have those numbers? Can we get them without?
We would have to.
We'd like to be part of a discussion if we're on.
We are not, we are not by law required to redistrict, however it is recommended by the legislature.
Thank you. Any, any, any other discussion? The motion is second. Ms. Hartley?
Recommended by the legislature, you said?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, when, how recent has this been?
Probably direct that to-
What usually happens is when, when the census is done, that's usually when it's supposed to redistrict. And I think every time the census has been done since I've been here, I've caught it up. And this is the first time council brought it on your own, and there's nobody that will make a move.
Okay.
Any other discussion? So, this is to add an agenda item for the next, uh, next month's meeting for discussion on redistricting. District one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
District three votes yes.
Four?
Yes.
Five, six?
Yes.
Seven?
Yes.
Eight?
Yes.
Anybody votes yes, motion passes. Any other items for the agenda for next month?
I may have one.
District Kane, what's your motion?
Teddy, is it okay if, if Jay and I talk a little bit more about the ambulance situation? I mean, I don't want to bring it on to the council, Jay, we don't have to.
Yeah, you have that discussion, yeah. All right, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion to adjourn by Mr. Prowse, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Wise, any discussion? District one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three? Four?
Yes.
Six?
Yes.
Seven?
Yes.
Eight?
Yes.
Anybody votes yes, we are adjourned. Thank you.